I hereby open the Planning Commission work session. Can we have a roll call, please, Sandy?
For, um, Ice Chair Bergen is excused today. Commissioner Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
And Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
And I'm also present. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
All right, okay, I'll get into instructions for any audience members who would like to share, who are joining us by phone or online. Please do keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. This meeting is a work session where the public may attend but not provide comment. Later during our regular session at 7:00 PM, you will have time for business from the audience. And before we have our next agenda, our one agenda item for the work session, just wanted to introduce, welcome our new, I think, go through introductions as well as welcome our new appointed or soon to be appointed member of the Planning Commission. So I think we could just start with introductions. I'm happy to begin. My name is Matt Salazar. I am chair for this year, and I've been on the Planning Commission. This is my, this is my third year. I've been on the commission, the Planning Commission, two years. So this is my third year on Planning Commission, and I have lived in Springfield for four years now. So yeah, I'll hand it off to Commissioner Buck. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Thank you, Jack. My name's Andrew Buck, and I've been on the Planning Commission a little less than two years, I think. Right in there. So this is my second year. I've lived in Springfield fifteen-ish years, right, right around there, somewhere between fifteen and sixteen years, somewhere in there. Yeah, and so that's a little bit about me.
Excellent. Thanks. Commissioner Schmunk?
Yeah, Steve Schmunk, lived in Springfield seventy-one years, been on the Planning Commission less than a year, fairly new, so, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Good evening. Thanks so much. Yeah, so Seth Thompson and lived in, I see Springfield, I was born and raised in Thurston, and moved around the state quite a few times, but I've been with the Planning Commission for a little less than a year, and happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'd like to welcome our new soon-to-be commissioner joining us, Isaac Rhodes Day. If you'd like to introduce yourself, we'd be happy to to hear from you.
Hi, there. Thank you for letting me introduce myself. So I am Isaac Rhodes Day, and I have lived in Springfield for three years, and I'm excited to hit the ground running with this this opportunity.
Thank you, and welcome to the commission. Yeah, this, you won't have an opportunity because you technically haven't been appointed yet, won't have an opportunity to share in this meeting, but it's, we welcome you, our, your first formal commission meeting will be, I'm sure you've heard, it will be a joint commission meeting with Slane County and City of Eugene, so that'll be, I think that'll be a hoot for your first meet, but we'll get into more regular meetings soon enough and regular agenda items, but welcome. Yeah, we're excited.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, excellent. And next up, and not seeing our other soon-to-be commissioner, we can jump into our agenda item for the work session. So that will be the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules update from Sandy, and I just want to also note that there is pending litigation that the city of Springfield is a part of regarding these rules. I, we're trusting the, the legal team to represent Springfield and the city of Springfield's position, and City Council has given them their directives in terms of that litigation. This update is not really on that litigation. It's really on how this, these pending rules, if they're implemented, how they might impact our planning, our work as a planning commission, and also the, the work of planning staff as well. So this is kind of an opportunity for us to get assessed on where we're at, if these rules get implemented, and how we can properly plan for that. And with that, I'll give it up to staff. I think Sandy and Christina will be, are you going to be jointly presenting to us, I'm assuming?
I'll just really quickly, I'm Christina Kras, Assistant City Attorney, and I'm the one for the city representing us in litigation. We've hired a special counsel that is doing that, but just as a brief update, we're in the briefing stage right now with the Court of Appeals, and they have put the case on a fast track. So we really hope to have a, an answer from the court before the end of the calendar year 2023, optimistically. And so really, that's the only, I think, thing that's relevant to the Planning Commission is that before, hopefully before the end of 2023, you'll have an answer whether we're moving forward with implementation or not, but sort of until the court rules, unless we get a bill from the legislature or some other resolution that we're working on separately, we need to, a recommendation is to move forward with implementing the rules as they've been adopted. And I'm on hand to answer questions, but otherwise Sandy is taking the lead.
All right. Well, good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager. And so it is falling to me and my team of comprehensive planning staff to implement these rules, and we are actually in the process of implementing them. Some of them are already in effect. So, but a little bit of background in terms of why these rules, and I want to emphasize that the city of Springfield supports the objectives of the rules, and that Mayor and councilors are on, on record for supporting the goals of the rules. It's really the technicalities of how the rules were prepared, and some of the specifics of how they would be implemented that we are taking issue with, but in general, we support the goals. And there are basically two main goals. And these rules apply to metropolitan areas within the state of Oregon. So we are in one of those metropolitan areas along with Eugene and Coburg that make up the Central Lane Metropolitan area. So the rules are aimed to reduce the carbon that is being emitted by light-duty vehicles. So this is to address climate change. And the state had looked back in 1990, started really focusing on trying to look at how we can reduce the carbon emissions and temper some of the climate change that is otherwise happening. And so in 1990, thirty-eight percent of greenhouse gases came from that transportation sector of light-duty vehicles. So based on current projections at that time, we would only reduce our emissions by twenty percent by 2050, and that was deemed not to be sufficient, with a goal instead of by 2050 reducing those emissions by seventy-five percent. So we haven't yet achieved a reduction since 1990. We're still more than we were before. So the governor determined that we needed to do more than what we've done up to this point to meet those legislatively set targets. So she passed an executive order, this was Governor Brown, directing state agencies to take actions to reduce and regulate the greenhouse gas emissions and mitigate the impacts of climate change. So that's the one overriding goal. And then the other goal of this is the equitable communities piece. And that is recognizing that there has been in history impacts to the most vulnerable in our community. And so we need to really center the needs of those people as we continue to do the planning efforts around housing and transportation, so that we are making sure that we're not having a detrimental impact on those vulnerable communities. So those are the two overarching goals as to why the governor passed the executive order. And then as part of that, the Department of Land Conservation and Development passed rules, these are administrative rules, to carry that out, carry out those efforts on a more detailed basis. So these CFAC rules or C F E C, Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules, are changing how we do land use and transportation planning in metropolitan areas in Oregon. They are broad and very complex, and it is still too early to fully understand the implications and effectiveness of the rules, but we are, as I mentioned before, starting to implement these rules. So in your packet, there are some different topics, and I will go through a little bit about each topic and then stop and see if any of the commissioners have questions or comments that you want to make, and then wrap up at the end. So this is your second work session on the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules. And the most immediate rules that take effect have to do with parking. So the phase one, the parking rules come in a couple of different phases, and so phase one are already in effect as of January 1st. So within the half a mile of frequent transit service for Springfield, that would be the Route 11 and the MX, or any new development within a half a mile of those transit routes, we are not requiring any onsite parking. And then there are other uses, residential and childcare and such, that also, no matter where they are in the city, we are not requiring onsite parking. Now, people can still provide parking should they choose to. Developers can still provide the parking, and when they do so, they would comply with the parking requirements about placement or screening or any other types of things that go along with those parking requirements. At the end of this March, there will be an increase in the number of spaces of multifamily residential units that will need to be electrical vehicle charging ready, meaning the conduit will need to be there. So under building code, twenty percent of all dwelling units need to, sorry, twenty percent of all parking spaces for multifamily dwelling need to be EV-ready, electrically charged, vehicle charging, and then for metropolitan areas affected by this, these rules, forty percent will need to be ready to accommodate charging of electrical vehicles. The second phase of the parking requirements, we worked with council last fall to determine how they wanted to approach it because there were some options. Council chose to not require any onsite parking anywhere in the city, or actually UGB when there's development there, as the most cost-effective practical way of implementing the parking requirements. We did ask for an extension so that instead of that going into effect in July, we got an extension from DLCD, so that does not go into effect until January of next year. So Sophie McInley, former Planning Commissioner, now working for us as a, through a temporary agency, is working on preparing the amendments to the parking code within the development code to comply with the rules. One of the council's questions in doing, looking at the requirements, was what about ADA spaces? So we worked with state agencies and looking at the rules. So basically, if you're not requiring any onsite parking, then we would not be requiring any ADA space. And according to the Americans for Disabilities Act, you have to provide this opportunity. So if we're not providing parking options, then you don't need to provide ADA. So the council gave direction earlier this year that if the state is not going to require it, then we won't either. So that's how we're going to prepare the code amendments, and then those will come through, back through you for approval, I mean, for a recommendation to council, before the council would take action to approve the amendments to the parking section of our code. Any questions about the parking aspect or comments?
Okay, I've got one question first, and then I see Commissioner Schmunk and Commissioner
Buck.
Buck, yeah, sorry. Commissioner Buck have their hands raised. So my question, Sandy, is just about what, when the, the code amendments have to, when the code, when the code has to be amended, what's the staff time requirement for that? Say, when these parking requirements are updated in the code, I guess, specifically towards parking?
Sure. So Sophie's spending about ten hours a week on this project, and I expect it will probably continue at that same pace through. I mean, I don't know how long she's going to be able to continue working for us, but say, I mean, basically, I would say, estimate for the year, say, ten hours a week per every week for the rest of the year until it's adopted, and these would need to be co-adopted by Slane County.
And that's for the, the least complicated route as well, just to give us a sense.
I'm just, I'm just kind of pulling this out of the air. I haven't really sat down and estimated how much it would really take, but I mean, that's about what she's spending now, and I would guess, you know, ebbs and flows, but that's kind of very grabbing out of the air rough estimate.
Okay, no, that's, that's helpful because I know that this is kind of a blanket update or proposed to be a blanket update. But there are some, when we get into other sections of the, of the rules, there will be much more complicated implications on code that may take significantly more staff time to implement. All right, Commissioner Schmunk?
Thanks. So twenty percent EV spaces are those, if you're providing, providing no parking, then that charging requirement is gone also?
Correct.
Okay. And so if the city was to provide or require ADA space or some accommodation for ADA and maybe a carpool, is that something the state would say, no, can't do that?
So there is a way that we would have to include in our code to require one ADA parking space per site. So we could do that. We can't require more than one per site, but there is a way that we could do that, and Bend is an example of a place that has done that, not for everywhere in the city, but for large parts of the city, and we would probably, you know, if we did it, we would not require it downtown because we have no parking requirements downtown in an ADA plan for providing ADA parking on the street in certain parts of downtown. So if we did that, you know, we probably, at least staff would propose we exclude that requirement for downtown, but could require one ADA space elsewhere in the city.
So per, there are so many dwellings or whatever?
Just one per.
One per, so if it's a fifty-unit space, it'd be one, one parking space? We couldn't provide three or four?
We could not require, no.
So, okay, the idea is, okay.
Now, this doesn't change, I mean, if, if the developer of a fifty-unit apartment complex did want to provide onsite parking, then they have to provide parking that, the ADA in compliance with the codes, which is based on the number you provide, you provide a certain number of ADA, and that wouldn't change.
I'm sorry, one more. So it, it, the city is feels, feels like it cannot require the spaces under this governor's order and doesn't want to push that at all because of what? I mean, are we talking lawsuits? Are we talking loss of, of financial aid, or what's the consequence? Oh, and also, let me, you maybe roll it into this. I'm unders, I'm curious what the suit is, and, and as we come to those things that relate to the suit, I'd like to have you clarify, you know, where that, in other words, what things we would be required to do, you know, even if the suit is one, what we would still be required to do or should be doing?
So first off, it wasn't the governor's executive order that directly said we could no longer require onsite parking. It's based on the rules that the department developed
By the governor.
To implement the governor's executive order.
Right.
And, and I'll defer the rest of it to Christina.
So to give a little bit of background, the governor's executive order essentially said, use all existing rulemaking authority that you have as an agency to a lot of state agencies to do anything you can to address climate change and increase equity. So the specific solutions that are, solutions that are in the rules to those legitimate problems, the specific solutions were developed by the agency, DLCD and the commission. So there wasn't anything really specific in that executive order. The litigation is challenging the entire rulemaking as a whole, on the basis of the, of arguments around the lack of, essentially, the department and the commission did not follow the, the laws they were supposed to follow when they adopt administrative rules governing land use in Oregon. They didn't consider everything that they were supposed to consider and documented appropriately, they didn't provide proper notice to cities and other interested parties about the rulemaking. And because they didn't consider what they were supposed to consider and provide proper notice, you know, cities like Springfield and our other, the other litigating parties, we have twelve other cities and a county that have joined us, and others that just don't have the resources for litigation, don't really understand what specific, what, what the rules are doing in terms of what problems they're trying to, how they're trying to solve the problems that have been identified, or what the need for these rules were as opposed to other less costly alternatives. So if we win the litigation, we're asking the court to send all of the rules back to LCDC to start over again, to go through a process where they do evaluate what is actually needed in terms of statewide planning rules to address issues with communities contributing to climate issues or inequitable planning, identify what's actually needed, and then adopt rules that are tailored to meet the problems that are actually faced, and to do that in a collaborative process that they're required under state law to go through that they didn't follow. So essentially, if we, if we prevail in the lawsuit the way we've asked the court, you know, to order all of the rules to go back to the agency, then none of the current rules that we would be adher, that Sandy's trying to implement would stand. So the, the parking regulation mandates would go away, and we would continue to have this development code version of parking reform that the council adopted in 2020, which provides a lot of flexibility, but does still have some minimum parking required. This is a very long-winded answer to your question, but the, the legal challenge is to the entire set of rules with the idea that, that problem would go back to the agency, and we would work collaboratively to come up with a way to give effect to what the governor had asked for in terms of addressing climate change inequity, but not in a prescriptive way that doesn't make sense for a lot of cities like Springfield.
Appreciate that, because I know it's not the first time you've had to go through it.
Yeah, no problem. I talk about this one a lot, and I'm happy to, when our brief is filed, I'm happy to send that to have Sarah send that out to the commission if you're interested. Legal briefs, the first, you know, twenty pages of them are formatting that we have to do for the Court of Appeals with long tables and citations and stuff, so the real meat of it, you know, starts a dozen pages in or so. I think it's really interesting. The commission might think it's a little procedurally dry, but it just depends on what you find is an interesting read, but I'm hap, that should be filed sometime this weekend. I'm happy to have that sent out to the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Buck?
Yeah. Thank you for the, the information, Sandy. I, I guess the, the piece that I'm unclear about is, so within half a mile of Route 11 and MX, the, there would be no parking requirement. The outside of that half mile, there would be.
For now, until January.
Okay, and then, and then it would just, and then it, it would become kind of just everywhere. There wouldn't be any. And so I guess where that leads me to, to wonder is what has our public transit system said about their, their readiness to, to deal with that additional burden of, of ridership and and have those routes been assessed to say, hey, you know, we think that there is, there is adequate coverage, so to speak, to get people more or less where they need to go. And all that, I mean, that's, that's kind of where my mind goes with it, and, and I imagine that those questions have been asked, but curious if you can kind of address what, what those conversations are about?
Sure. So my understanding is that we have still not that Lane Transit District still has not been able to get back to the pre-pandemic level of service that we had, and that's been largely because they don't have enough drivers. So they've been having a lot of, they're making a lot of effort to try to recruit additional drivers to be able to get back to the route frequency and extent that they had before the pandemic. They are finally getting more drivers trained up to be able to come on to reduce a lot of the overtime that many of their drivers were having to do. So I think LTD is willing to increase if they can get the stopping to do so.
And, and it and it's seen as kind of a needed thing to either get, a minimum, get back to pre-pandemic, but with additional burden on the system, possibly increase beyond that, because and again, I don't know the number, but it sounds like we're talking about a fair number of units, maybe not all at once, but over the course of time, and so there's going to be an increased demand and dependence on, on that.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's a good preview into when we get to the scenario plan topic, which is, maybe we go there next, since it's a good segue, yes. So the, another aspect of the rules is to do scenario planning. Now, in our region, we actually did scenario planning a decade ago and came up with a preferred scenario in 2015. Now, at, at that time, we were not required to adopt it in a formal sense and implement it. But because we have done that work, and each of the jurisdictions did sign on and say, yes, this is our, our preferred scenario, we can use that work as the basis of meeting the rules. So the preferred scenario does meet the greenhouse target reduction that are in the rules. And but that preferred scenario does require movement beyond our existing policies and level of service. We need to increase, and a lot of that is increased transit. And so having more transit options really does help move the dial of reducing particularly the the vehicle travel that's just one person. So that's part of it also. I guess one of the things that, in order to reduce that vehicle miles traveled, especially by single occupant vehicles, is how we talk about it, is you need to get increased densities, you need to bring land uses closer together, improve transit, and then make it easier to walk and bike, so that you don't have to depend on a vehicle to get places as much. So that's the concept. So when you look at the scenario plan, what will be required to do is actually implement it, rather than just having said, yes, this is our preferred, and use it as a guidance document, we will actually have to implement it by adopting it policies into our comprehensive plan and our transportation system plan. And then part of the scenario planning is to identify performance measures. So we'll be doing that, which So we'll be doing that, which, you know, there's been some work in that area, but we'll need to do some more work in identifying how are we going to measure progress? And then set targets for that and then report on those targets periodically over time to show how how are we doing? So there is a governance structure that will we were required to create for. Implementation of this scenario plan and council directed that they would like to use the existing metropolitan. Policy committee as that governance structure. It already includes the people, agent representatives of the agencies that need to be there. It makes sense. It's already within their scope. So that's a pretty easy. Aspect. There was a lot of citizen involvement done in developing the scenario plan, so I don't think there will need to be a lot more done. For that. And. As we are putting together this work program for the scenario plan, we're looking at the timelines and some of the other. Aspects of the rules. So we're pushing out some of the. We're going to ask DLCD to agree to push out the timelines on some of our requirements. So that a lot of the scenario planning and transportation work won't need to be done until about 2027, 28 timelines. So that's my quick overview of scenario planning. Any questions or comments about that aspect of the rules?
Can you just, when you said.
No problem, Commissioner Buck.
Are there any transportation options that go on the scope that we have now being looked at or is is when you say transportation options, just more of what we have currently?
In the scenario plan or more broadly?
Either.
I can't. It's a good question whether there's any in the scenario plan. I don't remember. Anything in the scenario plan that's like new. It's just. More of what we already know. So like additional investment in bicycle and pedestrian beyond what we already do. It needs to be a bigger percentage of our. Budget needs to go toward pedestrian and bicycle. Supportive projects. We need to have more frequent transit and maybe more routes even kind of a rethink of the transit. So. As. You know, and I'll look back at this with that question in mind, but I, you know, as I looked, read through this preferred scenario. I don't think that there's. Anything that's particularly new. I mean, there's mention of bike share. Which exists in Eugene, but it's not expanded to Springfield. At this time, so that depending how you characterize it, I mean, is that, yes, it would be new to Springfield, but it's not really new to. The metropolitan area. Beyond that, beyond the scenario planning, I don't know. I mean, there's. The transportation aspect of these climate-friendly equitable communities rules I am not well versed in, so I'm not sure. They're asking us to look beyond, you know, like at new solutions. And I don't, Christina, I don't know if you know the answer to that, but as we get into it more, we can find out. Or see if that's something we'd want to do.
Yeah, I was curious who was part of the discussion. Thank you, Sandy.
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
All right.
Commissioner Schmuck?
Yeah, so I want to add to that. I I'm very curious if LTD is dictating how. This, at least that piece of it is done for Springfield or is Springfield having input to the point where. We're looking at a larger number of scenarios. In terms of transit itself, you know.
So. The governance. Organization through the Metropolitan. Planning. Agency would include two members of LTD, but it would also include two members from Springfield City Council, Eugene City Council. Lane County. Coburg is still a question. Coburg does have an option of exempting themselves from these rules. But they haven't decided yet, so I'm not sure where Coburg's going to land within all of this discussion. They're still figuring that out. So. LTD, you know, there will be opportunity for the dialogue with the three. Jurisdictions at a minimum with LTD as part of that. Metropolitan Planning Committee. Or Policy Committee. I can't ever remember. I get it mixed up. Metropolitan Planning Organization Metropolitan Policy Committee is what it is. And, you know, Springfield doesn't have any real direct jurisdiction over Lane Transit District. So, you know, it needs to be at a collaborative level, but again, the state also can't hold us responsible for things that LTD does or doesn't do either. So at least that's how we think about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions on on the section on scenario planning?
All right, we're seeing none. I'll move on to or move back to climate friendly areas. So after parking, the climate friendly areas is kind of the next sequential of things that will have the most immediate impact from the rules. So by the end of this year, we will need to have a climate friendly area study. The study will not yet need to be adopted. That will be like the second phase. The second phase will include amendments to our comprehensive plan and zoning and development code to actually implement the climate friendly areas. But these areas are similar to what we had in the past, as we still have as nodal development. Where you get higher concentrations of. Jobs and housing in a very pedestrian friendly certified transit type environment. So we have started working on that. DLCD has contracted with ElCog to do the analysis. The technical aspect of these and then with Kearns and West to do the public engagement. Now those contracts end. At the end of June, at the end of the biennium. So after June, it will be up to us unless there's some other funding that comes through the legislature. To finish up the study. So I included in your, there really haven't gotten much on the technical analysis from ElCog yet. So, but we have gotten some results from Kearns and West. And what they did initially was to work with the cities to identify. Leaders of communities that are would meet the requirements of the rules. And of the types of communities that have maybe traditionally been underrepresented. And get their input in terms of how to best do outreach. Public outreach, which again comes back to that equity component of both. Involving, make sure we're inclusive in our involvement, but also considering the impacts of our policies on these populations. So I included in your packet some of the key findings that in from a, in a general sense, the findings from these stakeholder interviews. And then we'll be using that as we craft the community engagement plans. For the climate friendly areas and for any of the other. Work that we're doing under this project and maybe even other projects outside of the the CTEC rules. So. I've listed in there the organizations that they interviewed and some of those findings. Stop there.
All right. Any questions on that section? All right, seeing none. Is that, are there any other sections that you'd like to to cover? Any other pieces that you'd like to cover?
One more. I kind of touched on it earlier, but there is this section, the last section is on alternative dates. And so. The. Included in your packet is a list of. All the requirements of the rules and the dates that we have to to comply as attachment to. So that gives you kind of, it's our work plan for this decade. Is basically what it comes down to. So we are going to be submitting that request to shift those timelines. So instead of ending. At the end of 2026, we'll go out through 2029 and give us a little bit more time. Also, one of the reasons that those states are shifted is because the Oregon Department of Transportation. Needs to provide guidance and is willing to provide both technical assistance and funding. To cities to help meet the requirements of the transportation planning rule. And they can't do all cities at the same time. So they have planned out when they'll have their funding available and when they'll be able to provide more technical assistance. And so. The funding coming to our region will be after the date that it's due. And so that's another reason we're asking for that. Timeline extension. So we will submit that. Request for. This. More staggered work program by the end of June and should hear back from DLCD. Over the summertime as to whether they accept that revised schedule. So it's a lot of work. I think as Commissioner or Chair Salazar was getting at earlier. It has been involving Sophie on the parking. Molly Markarian has been working with me on the climate friendly areas. And then Drew Larson has been working with me on the scenario planning, trying to get the components to in. By June that we need to do to address the scenario planning part of it. And that's what I have to share for that section.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. Any other final questions on the timeline or any of the sections that we've covered up to this point?
Actually, I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Thompson, go ahead.
Thank you. Sandy, thank you for the great summary. My apologies if this has been. Covered already. I was curious, is there a document for review that kind of breaks down? The components of Executive Order 2004 that. I guess staff find problematic, or I'd be interested to hear kind of what. Not getting into the litigation aspect, but I'd love to hear kind of what's what is problematic from your perspective. I know it's a big question because obviously there's a lot of components, but I was just kind of curious. I have an itemized list that exists.
Again, I don't think we take issue with the executive order itself. It's really how it's been carried through by. The Department of Land Conservation and Development in terms of the rules, the specifics of the rules and the process that Christina had talked about, but. Have her elaborate.
Yeah, as far as the rules go, the city provided written public comment on the specific parts of the rules that are the most problematic at the time, and then we've identified other issues, but. So we can forward the public comments that were submitted that kind of go through, they're pretty technical. And then always happy to answer planning commissioners' questions offline as well. But again, the executive order just says the department should use its rulemaking authority to try to solve the problems that. It doesn't provide authority to do rulemaking on its own. So in talking about this, but the department also didn't cite to any other laws. Or authority that they have over land use in Oregon. So the only justification that they really gave. For the rulemaking was the executive order, which doesn't tell them to do these things specifically. So for example, the executive order, they could have taken that and decided we're going to develop a grant program to do, you know, XYZ and and fund grants for cities who want to be really proactive about things. They could have made changes to the prior transportation planning rule that applied. You know, less. Prescriptively than the rules that they came up. There were a lot of things that they could do. So climate friendly areas is not mentioned, you know, in this way in that executive order. But as far as what the specific issues with the rules are, happy to provide those. They're publicly available documents, so it's really not anything that's specific to the litigation.
Gotcha. I can look them up too. I have no problem doing that. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, the March, it was in 2022, March and May, LCDC's meetings. You can find the city of Springfield comments. The League of Oregon Cities also submitted quite a few. Robust comments that capture our concerns in other cities as well.
Gotcha. Awesome. And that was kind of the gist of it. I was just curious if I could delve into what I've been kind of curious this entire process is. What throughout the process, we've been talking about this is what will the verdict be to the city of Springfield? Overall, and that's why I kind of want to understand, understand better. So I totally understand the the parking components and 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 the. And the goal, I think, of what of what the executive order was trying to achieve with that. I was just kind of curious. From the burden aspect, but I'll look that up.
Yeah, and if we had to boil it down, it largely comes comes from the fact that the. They're they're so detailed. That their own staff don't seem to understand the implications of the wording that was written, which leads to uncertainty for everyone, which leads to more work for everyone. And they're highly prescriptive. They read like land use regulations that the city would adopt as opposed to the types of. Goals or objectives that the state is usually setting with flexibility for local governments to figure out the, you know, specific toolbox of solutions that. Will lead to those objectives. They're highly specific rules about exactly what. Is allowed and not allowed and where there are alternative paths or flexibility, those are either not realistic, not achievable. Or again, so detailed and very restrictive. Alternatives that nobody so far is taking them up on those alternatives. So. If the sort of like, if you don't want to dive into the real technical details, that's essentially what it boils down to is that these read like the types of decisions that should be made on a local level. Rather than here's the policies we want you to figure out. Here's the objectives we want you to reach.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any final questions? All right, seeing none. That is the only such agenda item for this work session, so we can wrap up the work session. And we do have the ability to go straight from the work session into the regular session, but we can also take a break if needed. Could I get a show of hands for folks who would like to take a five-minute break? Show of hands for who would like to go straight into the work session. All right, sounds good to me. Okay, all right. In that case, I hereby, so do I have to formally close the work session, Christina?
Yep, just close the work session and open the regular session.
Okay, thank you. I hereby close the work session and open the regular session of the Planning Commission. And we don't need a separate roll call, correct?
No, there have been no changes to attendance, so you can go right to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Excellent. All right, those in attendance, we will play, recite the Pledge of Allegiance and others online are muted. Would anyone in attendance like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you. All right, and our next item is approval of the minutes from February 7th, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? All right, seeing none. I hereby approve the minutes with no corrections. Do we have any business from the audience? If you are joining us online, feel free to raise your hand. I see no one in the Jesse Main Room. All right, seeing none. The next item is. Reports of city council meetings. I have the list here. I think last time we left off. Commissioner Thompson. From the meeting.
I attended February or March 13th.
Okay, and was there a February meeting that you attended as well? I think I remember the the meeting previous prior to our last meeting. Okay, um and was there a February meeting that you attended as well? I think I remember the um the meeting previous prior to our last meeting. Um. Uh, we didn't require you to to share the minutes that time.
Gotcha. I I'm unsure if there was city council meeting, but I did attend the Community Development Advisory Committee uh and from February eighth that I that I was assigned to.
I think that's the one, yeah.
Okay. Would you like me to uh report?
I don't think we need to to report from meetings um uh from committee meetings, just council meetings, so. Um. All right, um any are there any meeting reports from before March? Um, all right, Commissioner Schmunk?
Uh, February thirteenth. Um, we got a report on that. Um, city city council work session. Uh, February thirteenth on street lighting, it was um. So uh it reported that the city owns five thousand forty eight streetlights, fifty percent are LED, the other fifty percent are HID. Uh, they're currently maintained by sub uh current systems in need of expensive repairs and it has uh expensive and frequent repairs. Uh, so um the proposal, um well, the annual energy cost is about two hundred and ten thousand uh operations and maintenance, a hundred and ninety six thousand. Uh LEDs use fifty percent less and uh requires seventy five percent less of maintenance, so. Um. Uh, subs involvement in the um. Uh, current um. But subs involved in in a replacement contract, a private contract. Um, they'll continue to maintain maintain the uh the the streetlights. City Council approved two point five or two point seven five. Million in June and twenty two for street lighting, leveraging American Rescue uh plan funding. This started an evaluation and audit process. It's now determined the costs and the contract amount with guaranteed cost savings. A sub BPA grant of sixty three thousand and an added added ARPU funds uh. Add to the June allocation to cover the expected maximum cost of three million, two hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, eight hundred and thirty dollars. This contract. It'll include minimum annual guaranteed energy savings of a hundred and thirty five thousand. A maintenance expected savings of uh forty two thousand, seven hundred. Um, and then um annual savings totaling a hundred and seventy, almost a hundred and seventy eight thousand. Uh, the highlights are upgrade all streetlights to LED. The systems will be intelligent, allowing um. A lighting level adjustment will address address some of lighting pollution, certain areas and trim trees and other vegetation blocking lights. Uh, it was a great report to do uh this um, so you know, uh take care of a lot of um. Energy costs and it's just great, but maybe even get it to our climate. Uh, goals here.
Excellent, thank you, Commissioner Schmunk. Uh, any other February uh meeting minute reports? All right, I think chronologically I had um the next meeting, which was March sixth. Um, March sixth, there was a work session, a um city council meeting and then a special work session. So in the work session, the city council was doing its continued work on um getting reports on the um. Uh. How to how they're going to plan on um any rules around um camping in Springfield. So they were mostly looking at reports on where um. Reports of camping have been um uh where um where in the city um camping has been both reported to SPD and where has where SPD has. Um, responded to incidents of camping. Um, there was also discussion of fines and the impact of um camping fines on um folks who are experiencing experiencing homelessness. The council did give um general uh guidance to explore lowering fines. Um, but is continuing its work on um reviewing what rules, if any, um the city is going to adopt around camping in the future. Um. In the regular session, the main item was around uh Linda Lane property. Um, specifically, there is an extension to a sewer line um that is being planned for. And the um, the council voted to grant an easement for a portion of the property for wetlands. Um, to allow um to further allow that um uh sewer line extension in the um southern portion of the property. Um, and then in the regular session, there were some, um there were interviews for Arts Commission and the council. Um, opted to, there were six um openings for the Arts Commission and the council um made uh appointments for all six of those positions, so. Our Arts Commission is now uh fully stocked. Um, all right, and that's it for March sixth. Uh, Commissioner Thompson, March thirteenth.
Thank you. Uh, it was a pretty packed uh. Meeting on on March seventeen, they had a lot, a lot of topics to discuss. Um, the first uh primary components were the housing diversity tax tax exemption and transportation funding and. Uh, lastly, they conducted uh the council conducted board committee and commission interviews for the. Springfield Police Advisory Committee, Community Development Advisory Committee, the Historic Commission. Museum Committee, Budget Committee and Planning Commission, and then finally discuss the fiscal year. Twenty three supplemental budgets. Um, I'll just summarize maybe the housing diversity tax exemption because it was. Pretty interesting. The other two topics uh were also. Uh, pretty impactful details, but to have the exemption was 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 good for the council to understand. So uh Katie Carroll, uh city of Springfield, the housing analyst analyst presented. On the uh tax exemption, which is a, so the housing diversity taxes exemption is a state enabled property tax exemption that cities and counties. May choose to implement, and it is designed to incentivize the development of multiple unit housing. Uh, units near transit locations. So this exemption has been the topic uh with the council since two thousand sixteen. Uh, in two thousand twenty two, the council uh directed staff to continue exploring options, so that's. Basically where we are right now, so the council will re-discuss this topic in May and uh I think get closer to making a decision for adoption.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other um meeting reports that we missed? All right, seeing none. Uh, any other business from the Planning Commission? All right, seeing none. Any business from Development and Public Works Department?
I would like to talk through a little bit about your next meeting as it's a little unusual being a joint meeting. Of the Eugene, Lane County and Springfield Planning Commissions. So um we do encourage you to join virtually if that's possible. Um, Sarah and I will be here in the Jesse main room so that if there are commissioners that prefer to do it in person, you may come here. Or if there are pub, if there are members of the public. Who prefer or can't go online, but they prefer in person, they can come here. There will also be a place. At Lane County at the on the Delta Highway there at their um land management division. There will be a room there available for people as well. Um. So this um matter is a metro plan amendment that will be coming to you for a recommendation and will ultimately need to be co-adopted by. The elected officials from Eugene, Springfield and Lane County. Um. So we um. Will probably. Um, you may be able to get to deliberations um that night, but there will be a public he hearing preceded by a work session, so the work session will be at six o'clock. Public hearing at seven o'clock. Um. If you do not start deliberating, um and we could, we haven't really talked this through with the chairs of the planning commissions yet. Um, but if you don't deliberate that day, then you will deliberate separately. So you will not come back together as a three. Mem, three body kind of meeting. Um, each jurisdictions will deliberate and make its own recommendation. Um, at a at your own meeting, so we would probably do that. Um, at your first meeting in May is when we would um have scheduled the deliberations or. Actually making your recommendation to the Springfield City Council. Um. Because it's a joint meeting, we won't do some of this other stuff that we typically do during a regular meeting. Like we won't be approving any minutes or having reports from council meetings and such, so it will be streamlined to just be. Work session and public hearing on the topic at hand, which is this metro plan amendment, which would. Enable sanitary sewer extension to Goshen and to the landfill to be able to take the leachate from the landfill to the treatment plant out in North Eugene. Any questions about the process? Um, of coming together as three member commission?
Who's chairing it?
Um, I think it will be led by Lane County. Um. But each chair, I mean Chair Salazar will be still be opening the Springfield portion of the meeting and will. Um. Be doing the Springfield components, but um I think likely the Lane County um chairperson will kind of facilitate the overall meeting. And call on people to testify, for example.
Sandy, will it make sense for us to um for the chairs to convene before the meeting to to decide? Um, figure out the 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 rules of how we'll um uh kind of approach the um logistics of the the meeting?
Yeah, so we have you scheduled to meet at four thirty the Monday before.
Sounds good to me.
Um, all the materials will still be on Springfield, Oregon speaks. Um, so you can use your standard approach to look at the materials there. Um, they'll also be available through Eugene and Springfield, I mean on Lane County. Um, but we will. I'm not sure if we'll be able to get all comments. That come in ahead of time onto Springfield, Oregon speaks. Um, but we'll. To the extent that we can, we will do that, so that um those will be there for you to see. Um. Those that come in both directly to Springfield or. In one of the other jurisdictions, I hopefully we're gonna have to get those and post them on Springfield, Oregon speaks, so you can do all the comments there as well. And I don't have any other business from the department.
All right, well, we're looking forward to the next meeting. It'll be uh it'll be a hoot. Um, all right, excellent. Well, thanks, everyone. Um, I hereby adjourn the Planning Commission regular meeting.